Gabe, were you in on this? The, the, ma- building the budget?
Yes.
Okay, so if it's okay with the board, give Gabe permission if he wants to jump in at any point.
Absolutely.
All right? So, Gabe, if you want to jump in and, and participate, feel free.
So, so Gabe, Lydia, myself, and Stephanie all worked on the budget. So can we give Stephanie the same permission as you guys?
Yes, you'll give Stephanie. I mean, if it's okay with the rest of the board.
Absolutely.
Are you okay with that, Stephanie?
Yeah.
Thank you. So does, do any of you have any concerns for next year of missing budget or not having enough funds for anything?
SPED.
SPED, okay.
Yeah, it's always been.
We don't know what we're getting this year as far as expenses. How many will be.
It's a wild card.
So that's what we're.
It's a wild card. It always is.
And that's kind of driven by how many SPED students show up too, then.
Right, it is.
Yeah, that's. And I, and I brought this one because I look at basically at the actuals. So if you're still on page three, special ed is five numbers down, five, two, one.
Yep.
Takes a big chunk of our budget.
Yeah, mine thought. Um, one of the thing, I, I met with our SPED director last week. And we're, we're coming up with a, that's a lot of money in here. We're coming up with a plan to look at maybe combining some of the one-on-one situations that we have with one parent and one kid. Obviously, we're limited somewhat with law, but where available and, and admissible by law, we'll have maybe two-on-one, two kids, one parent that, where we can do that. Or even a class of four or five kids with a couple of paras. Um, we may have to do that out of necessity if we don't have enough paras. Some of our paras have applied for teacher positions and we'll be recommending them for hire, you know? And we want them to promote, you know, and grow. So, um, we'll be looking at saving some money that way on the SPED side. But obviously, we will always operate within the law, so.
Correct, yeah. So just, just by me looking this over, it looks like SPED is about 25% of our budget then, right? Just roughly.
Roughly, yeah.
Yes, Steph.
So I was just going to mention that we have allocated funds for curriculum. And so that is where you're going to see a little bit larger amount in the elementary state. Page two and up. And then secretary can sit there and put their stuff on there. That's to the work curriculum, have work curriculum in other.
What, what percentage of our budget do we end with? Yes. What's our fund balance at the end? What percentage of our budget is our fund balance at the end?
It always changes, but they always write it down that it's three months in reserve.
I couldn't hear that.
It always changes, but they try to have three months in reserve. That's all of our current accounts payables, including all payroll.
Okay. Because on page two, first line, it shows that our fund balance, okay, this is July the first, has got, would go up a little bit. Is that correct?
Yes.
Well, no, because our actuarial, this was the prior budget amount that I have. Their actuarial was a million, one hundred and twelve thousand was our actuarial fund balance.
So it seems as if.
My projection is down. I, so far this year, we have spent more than we've probably.
So that might go down then?
Well, I think that one is, that's my best guess. I think I'm close there. I think it'll go up a little bit. I'm hoping that it goes up a little bit. I still have, you know, the, the human taxes won't come until.
We're still waiting on some additional funds to come in.
And there's additional revenue.
Yeah, I have $300,000 of the part of the ed team that is not reflected in here yet, so.
Okay, okay.
I'm hopeful that it's about where it was last year. Actuar.
Sounds real close.
Which is close to having three months.
I'm always curious, delinquent taxes.
Property taxes that are not paid. Property taxes that we expect to get.
Expect, okay.
That are not paid.
So it's rather different for people who are, have that tax, who pay their own taxes.
Yes, Stephanie.
We always look at that as a bonus because we don't know what's going to come in. Taxes are always on the rise anyways. So that's why we look at it like this is kind of an unknown. A lot of the time, how much we're going to get in the first place. But if it's a delinquent, say, two years ago, and they're having this year, then our portion of that payment that they brought current.
Any more questions? I'm good. Gabe, are you happy?
I think so. A lot of wheels into it, but.
Mr. Supa, you happy?
Yes, I think we've got a good budget here.
Are you happy?
I'm happy.
But we don't, we don't want her to be happy.
That's why I asked towards the end. Stephanie, are you okay with the budget? You know, I mean, you worked on it and it's kind of obvious. Right? Does any of you have any concerns? Are there areas of concern that we need to be aware of?
That we can do anything about?
No.
Okay. I think it is mine, especially that as well. And that's one of the reasons I'm trying to specifically look for opportunities to save money there. But that's, that would be my biggest concern on the entire budget.
Stephanie?
We're talking right now about our general funds, but this year, we haven't taken our federal force funds for a couple of years now. We can't always guarantee we're going to get them. We're getting some this year, we could have some in reserve last year. So we're tapping into those federal force funds this year to try to pay for some of the salaries that we have. So that's going to go down a little bit. But I guess part of my concern is that we only have so much, obviously. We pay what the state gives us for FTE. And to be competitive, to be able to fill our own position system. So just keep that in mind because we're trying to find people and, and now plus we've already tapped in for some of our salaries already into our federal force fund. That will, we don't know what we'll get again, and we potentially could get none. And so that's just concerning.
Right, well, thank you, everybody, for your work on this. And I don't know if these gentlemen have any more questions?
I don't have any more questions.
Okay. I don't think we have the information.
So, um, we're all satisfied and it's appropriate at this time to close the annual budget hearing meeting. So thank you all for your excellent work. I, you guys run a tight ship.
Yeah.
No question.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, we're moving on now to the, yeah?
We got five fifty-six.
Five fifty-five is what I just looked.
It's five fifty-six. I've got five fifty-six.
I guess we may wait four minutes and start.
I apologize.
No worries.
I seem to get, go early on all sorts of things.
So we're waiting for the new board members. I'll just kind of do a quick explanation of these board packets that are here. The documents are in order as, as to what they are on the agenda. So you can just flip through them as you go through the agenda. If you have a chance to explain them.
Yeah, I, I.
I talked about flowers, though.
Well, you can.
Yeah, these are.
So, Gabe.
Sounds like half a battery or something, sort of big punch.
But both, so just, we swore in, you know? But they never participated in the meeting.
I know, there was no action, board actions that they.
No, but they never came up and they never participated. I know. So it's just a huge, it's really, even if this is nothing about when they swore in. I know. Very stupid. I mean, very stupid. I know. They did not participate in the meeting.
Did not participate. And it was one of the last, that was one of the last things we did in the meeting. So, anyway.
And I'm saying, the new trustees never participated in the meeting. They never participated as trustees, they never.
But definitely, there's an obscure law that says the government in the same meeting that the, the ISBA had to have the attorney look it up after something.
But there is no board policy?
It's not board policy, it's state policy.
State policy, state policy. You know, it's a statute.
It's a state statute that even the ISBA had to have the attorney look up because somebody contacted an attorney and a judge gave them.
Yeah, they, I'm.
But, but I mean, they, no, no, I, I, I think really, I mean, I, I take it because we, we actually questioned that before the meeting. Yes, we did. We asked whether two, at least two board members says, hey, you're listening, I've been in the house. But, but they never participated in the meeting, so.
Well, what they're saying, what, what we still explain to me is that if we don't get back and correct this, then future decisions made that those board members voted on could be a bit of a question.
Right, but also. Our, our school attorney said, hey, just listen, I'm going to, that's what our school attorney said. I broke up something that was damn wrong.
As opposed to us noticing that something was wrong.
Wrong according to our, I know, you're, I think that's. This is nothing about. Okay. Each trustee shall qualify for and assume office.
Right. One or a group of members at the regular meeting of the board of trustees next following such appointment.
They did not assume office.
No, they didn't.
Oh, if appointed.
In regular meetings, they're following such appointment.
Okay. And that's, and that's a qualified for and assume office, is what it talks about, right? They will qualify and assume office on January first, or they will qualify and assume office at the, at the regular meeting of the board of trustees next. So this is the next.
Yeah, so at this one, we shouldn't have done it the same way.
No, this is the qualified for and assume office. That's what that says.
Yeah.
Doesn't talk about the sworn in at all.
Assuming office is sworn in, isn't it? That's part of.
No, oh, well, no, they, they, they just take the whole process. But they, they, they know what's.
All right.
Okay. All right.
You ready to go?
Yeah.
Now start recording.
I wanted to go in at six o'clock. Still six o'clock.
Okay, I'd like to call to order. I'd like to call to order the regular board meeting of the Garden Valley School District number seventy-one. Today is Tuesday, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. The time is six oh one. And we, time is, I called to order, let's take a roll call.
George Simpson?
Robert Murray.
Morris Morgan.
Excellent. Okay, now we do pledge of allegiance. Let's everybody stand, face the large, the large flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we. Uh, I'd like to clear up a, item four here as a, a resolution. Where, where evidently we were in violation of Idaho Code thirty-three dash five oh one, paren three, uh, when we swore in the new, the new trustees in the last meeting. Evidently, we have to wait to the next regularly scheduled meeting to swear our trustees in. So basically, we jumped the gun by two weeks. But there's no harm, no foul, because we didn't do any, any board actions where the new trustees participated. So there was no, no breach of, of, of the law for all intents purposes. But I'm supposed to read. I'm supposed to read a, a script that the legal people gave to us. On May thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, the Garden Valley School Board held a special meeting. As noted on the agenda, the board discussed and selected candidates for the open board positions in zone two and zone four. After selecting the new board members in those zones, they were administered the oath of office. In full transparency, I want to share that the board was unaware of Idaho Code thirty-three dash five oh one, paren three, which requires new trustees to be administered the oath of office and sworn in at the next regular meeting. Specifically, that section of the Idaho, Idaho code says, each trustee shall qualify for and assume office on January first, next following his election. Or, if appointed, that's the case that we're talking about, at the regular meeting of the board of trustees next following such appointment. At the first meeting, after a trustee assumes office, an oath of office shall be administered to the trustee. Whether elected, re-elected, or appointed, said oath may be administered by the clerk or by another trustee of the district. And the records of the district shall show such oath of office to have been taken and by whom administered and shall be filed with the official records of that district. So we apologize for that oversight and want to be transparent and acknowledge our mistake. Since the two selected board members did not make any decisions or were not involved in any board actions and have not fulfilled any components of the board position, we would like to take this time to clarify and fix the process as such. This being the board's next regular meeting, following the appointment, I am going to ask the clerk to re-administer the oath of office to the two selected candidates for zone two and zone four.
We can do it at the same, can we do it at the same time? Does any?
I don't know. There might be a code against that.
Let's go ahead and do them one at a time. So let's do, zone two is Ryan. And I've got you seated right here. So if you wanted to stand up and, actually.
You can just read it.
Yeah, you can just read it. I don't have to, you don't have to. Um, what we're reading is.
Okay. Raise, standing in front of the camera. And raise your right hand.
Okay. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Idaho and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee of the Garden Valley School District number seventy-one according to the best of my ability.
Excellent. Do the name.
Okay, let me take this for.
Take your seat. And you can flip up your name. Welcome aboard, Ryan.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Idaho and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee of the Garden Valley School District seventy-one according to the best of my ability.
Welcome aboard. Okay, and the next, the next item of business is actually rather important. Uh, it's the reorganization meeting where we reorganized the board and picked the offices of the board. Six A, election of chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we elect Ryan as chairman. Second floor.
Okay, any, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye, aye, aye. You, you don't, oh, for yours. Excellent. Um, Ryan, you're chairman.
Okay.
Lovely. At the next meeting, not, not right now.
Right, is that correct?
That is correct, because at the moment, Rob is still acting chairman, and so, and so it would take effect the next meeting.
Right, okay. Okay, six B, election of vice chair. Can we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we elect Kylie to be vice chair. Second for this board.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Kylie, you can vote. All righty, excellent. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay, six C, election of treasurer.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we would elect Morris to be treasurer, if he still accepts that position.
My second.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? Guess not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. You do a good job. Item six, six D, election of board clerk and custodian of record.
Mr. Chair, move that we, uh, elect Melissa again as our board clerk and custodian of record.
Mr. Chair, I will second that.
Um, I have a question. Let's say we presume, presume that you are teaching as well. Will you have time?
So I had this discussion with Randy, and what I said was, I, let's see how it goes. But if I become overwhelmed, I do have to say that I'm also working on my master's degree in teaching. Those are going to have to come ahead of the school board, and I would have to resign if I become overwhelmed. But if we only have one meeting, if, if we have another month like May, I can't do it. But if we have one meeting a month, I think it's beautiful.
Well, I would assume that we're going to have fair notice of that, and we will be able to find a suitable replacement.
Right, I wouldn't actually leave until you found somebody.
Don't say that.
Oh, I, I would do my best to not do that to you.
And we apologize for, for the hectic May.
Yes.
It was, it was necessary.
I, I, I know. It had to be a priority, but it was a difficult month.
And hopefully, hopefully, hopefully that won't happen again. So.
So you have a, yeah, you have a motion.
A motion, so now we had some discussion, and now, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Excellent.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just something for the board to note. My term ends, Ryan terms in, and Kylie term, term ends, all at the same time. Let's say at that time, three board members are replaced. It causes a lot of instability at, on the board. So perhaps we should look at those three and decide if we can, and the board has done this before, either extend, and because it's twenty twenty-three, we can't shorten it, either extend one of those.
The staggering.
Time periods so that we can stagger the board. Also, on the website, George Simpson's time is not listed. And also, um, zone five's time has not been updated.
Um, when is the last time you looked?
Uh, this afternoon before the meeting.
This is what I talked to you about with the county.
Oh, okay, yes, oh, I, yeah, I don't remember. Okay, so I contacted county, and we are waiting for them to confirm that that is exactly what it is. Because basically, the information that she had came from me, which was the information that I had put on there. And so they're confirmed, we're just waiting for confirmation that that's correct.
Because a few years ago, the board fixed that, so that there's a maximum of, of just two board members that are.
Well, elections are every two years for trustees, which means that three of them have to be at one point and two of them at another point.
Yep.
And so that, but anyhow, so, yeah.
Right now, we have three, so.
So we're, um, waiting on the county to get back.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Item. Item six E, establish, establish signatories. General Fund, Lydia Callaway, Stephanie Korn, Superintendent Randy Thompson, Chairman Ryan Williamson, and Treasurer Morris Morgan. Student Accounts, Principal Steve Lynch.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we would establish the signatories as written and include Ryan Williamson as chairman and Treasurer Morris Morgan.
In the blanks that are on our agenda. Okay. Lydia.
We have student accounts, principal Steve, Evan, and, uh, right. We have to have them signature, so it's all above and then on student.
It's, uh, in addition, Steve is a, is an additional signatory.
That's, that's the way I agree.
Yeah, it should be general fund and student accounts with all of our names listed, and then just student accounts with his name listed.
Okay. Do we need to make a, a motion reading it that way?
It, it has to be given to the bank when we're waiting for signatures, so we have to.
Okay, so you want me to make a motion, then I'll add Steve Lynch to the person.
No, 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 you, you need to add student accounts to that first part, because we signed everything.
So general.
And he will only use student accounts.
Oh, okay, okay.
Oh, okay. So. I get it, okay.
Yeah, so that was a, that was a.
That was a.
I didn't understand how that's supposed to be.
So you, you. Yeah, I still don't understand.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Okay, Morris got it.
I move that we establish signatories for general account and student accounts as Lydia Callaway, Stephanie Korn, Superintendent Randy Thompson, Chairman Ryan Williamson, and Treasurer Morris Morgan. And for student accounts only, Principal Stephen Leach.
Excellent.
Just in order, can he motion since he's on the, his name is listed in the.
Oh, he can't make a motion?
Yes, because this is, this has been voted on, I was voted into a position, so.
Yeah. Okay, so you can make a motion.
Uh, I will second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Excellent, thank you. Item six F, new board member sign code of ethics. That's in our packet?
So, yeah, in your board packet, there is a, it says sixteen hundred on the side right there. It should go up through. So you guys can sign the back of that, and I'll come pick it up.
That's just new school board members, because that's.
Yeah, you guys signed it on January first, and you're good to go.
Okay, so it's just new, that's great.
And actually, I can just get it out to the meeting if you guys need to kind of take a minute.
Okay, item, moving on, item six G, approve and adopt agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve and adopt the agenda as listed.
Mr. Chair, I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Excellent. I like this board already. Getting this stuff done. Um, okay, consent, consent, item number seven, consent agenda. Item seven A is approve of minutes of May tenth, twenty twenty-two, regular school board meeting, the May seventeenth special school board meeting, and the May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two special school board meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I think we can make a motion to approve the consent agenda in total, can't we? Yes. Yep.
Yeah.
So, our motion that we approve the consent agenda in total.
My second.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Excellent, excellent. Delegations, item number eight, delegations and reports. Mr. Superintendent, you're.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'll be real quick tonight, a few things, um, our exit survey that I implemented, I did receive a few responses. I'm in the process of tabulating those, and I will have a report for you at the next board meeting, if not before, with some information on that. Item number two, um, um, trustee Williamson and I have been working on this with our tech director, um, Kevin Hennessy. We have. Selected and gaggle, it's endorsed by the State Department of Education. It monitors the communications in our computer system, emails, chat, uh, documents that are saved to our system. Uh, it monitors for violent words, for, um, threats of harm to oneself or others. It's an avenue for us to hopefully get ahead of any type of threat or something that may come from our systems. So, um, we have an implementation date of July one. We will be doing some user testing to verify the products working as intended. I think we had a very good call last week, Ryan, with, um, our trustee Wims, excuse me, with, um, with gaggle, and they understand what we want. Uh, we gave them a few ideas, I think, about their own system, that hopefully, uh, if it doesn't do, they'll be able to make some improvements on, and I'm real excited about this going forward. I don't know if you had anything you wanted to share.
I'm too, I, I think just with the technology that we've distributed to the students, um, technology's a powerful thing, and it goes both ways. And if we're going to bestow that responsibility on them, we need to make sure that we're protecting them and their safety at the same time. So this really enables us to do that with the resources that we have, so I think it's a.
It's relatively inexpensive as well, it's around, it's a little over two thousand dollars a year, so.
Okay. I have, we're being proactive on this stuff, too. I have a question, are we able to choose the key words that the gaggle?
They, they have a dictionary, so to speak, but we can give them suggestions to add to. And, so we do have some input into that, but it's part of their software program, if I understood it.
Or do they dictate it?
They have an ongoing list that's always changing, because language always changes, and the way that, you know, students use language over time changes, so it's constantly being altered, but we do have the ability to go in and customize those lists.
And it's one of the, one of the things, you know, sometimes kids, we use words from another language. So if there's something unique to Garden Valley that we find kids are using, we'll share that with gaggle, and they can add it to their dictionary, so.
Interesting.
Good question, though.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Well, uh, you have more?
Yes, a couple more things. Um, the boiler, remember the big boiler? Okay, we had a conference call today with the National Forest Service, they have found another potential buyer. One of, last year that wanted to buy it dropped out. This one sounded pretty good, Dave and I met with them. Um, they would cover the entire cost of removing it from the school, putting the roof back on, and, you know, put it back to, you know, previous condition.
Seriously, the roof's gotta come off?
It does.
So it's like a ship? Like a ship.
So, um, anyway, the, the guy himself, if, we, we've gotten estimates on everything, except for the crane, to remove the roof and pull the boiler out. We've had two companies come up here, but they haven't given us an estimate yet. So this buyer was in Oregon, I can't remember what city, you remember? Anyway, he, um, he's, he's gonna talk to one of his local crane guys and see how much they would charge him to come over and do it. I mean, he's that interested in buying it, so hopefully we'll have that sold here soon.
Yes.
He sounded like he really wanted to get it in place before the winter hits next year, so we'll continue to work on that. And then one final thing, a little hiring update, uh, assuming the board approves the two recommendations I have tonight, that will leave us with four vacancies, first grade, fourth grade, special education, and high school math, okay? I have three paraprofessionals that are interested in three of those positions. Um, and because of timing, uh, one was unable to do an interview with us today, uh, and two others have to wait until July for an emergency provisional certificate, which I'll be requesting from the, the board to declare that next month in July. Uh, so that will fill three of the four positions, assuming we can get them. And we still will have high school math, my backup plan is to use IDLA, uh, for these math things if we can't find a teacher, but we are actively, and I say we, Steve and I, Principal Lynch are actively trying to find a teacher, you know, so that we have all of our teacher vacancies filled. Uh, we still have a counselor vacancy and nurse, um, but we do also have a lead on a counselor that we're working pretty hard right now, so. That's kind of where we are in our hiring, any questions on that? Yes.
Were, were there anything, was there anything that came up on the exit interviews that was worth noting or notating?
I, I haven't had a chance to tabulate it all, I just glanced through the comments to make sure there was nothing egregious that needed to be addressed immediately, and there was, and you think right away needed to be addressed.
So, so were these, were these exit interviews, were they, um, voluntary?
Yes. And confidential.
And confidential, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Uh, has the board by chance seen the exit interview itself, so what questions were asked?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Would I be able to get a copy?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Good question.
It's actually very comprehensive, so. Okay, excellent.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine, this is the community forum on the agenda items. Public comment of reference, referencing policies fifteen twenty, forty-one oh five, and forty-one oh five F. Public comment will be taken from the public on matters scheduled on the agenda. Chairman may interrupt or terminate an individual statement when it's too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, repetitive, or irrelevant. A person wishing to speak on an agenda item should fill out a request to appear before the board, form forty-one oh five F, and submit it to the board clerk before the meeting begins. These forms will be available at the sign-in desk or can be found on the GVSD.net, um, website under policy forty-one oh five F. Do we have any, any requests? So it's a quiet, it's a quiet day, nothing controversial, huh?
No.
Excellent. So, moving on to item ten, which is executive session. Seventy-four dash two oh six, paren one subsection A. An executive session at which members of the public are excluded may be held, but only for the purposes and only in the manner set forth in this section. The motion to go into executive session shall identify the specific subsections of this section that authorize the executive session. There shall be a roll call vote on the, on the motion, and the vote shall be recorded in the minutes. An exec, executive session shall be authorized by a two-thirds vote of the governing body. An executive session may be held pursuant to seventy-four dash two oh six, paren one A, to consider hiring a public officer, an employee, staff member, or individual agent, wherein the respective qualities of the individual are to be evaluated in order to fill a particular vacancy or need. That is the reason for executive session stated, and we are now in executive session?
No.
Do we have the?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into executive session pursuant to IDO code seventy-four dash two zero six one subsection A.
What's that? Good. All in favor?
All in.
We don't, this roll call, yeah.
Aye.
Your name?
Simon Peters.
George Simpson.
Robert Murray.
Morris Morgan, aye.
Ryan Williamson.
Excellent, so we are now in executive session, and we will.
Leave.
Leave the room and go to a special room, and hopefully we won't keep you hanging. Note the time.
Pause that, and mark the time at six twenty-eight, because I will not.
Yeah.
I pause, yep, not, just pause it, because then you can just, um.
I hit, I hit pause, you see it's blinking?
Yep, you can just hit it again.
Hit the pause button. Good.
So that's just. Your brother. Yeah, I can sit there on Ben's box.
It, it makes like.
Yeah. Yeah. Then he wants to, we have three.
Oh, yeah.
And it's that three, yeah.
All right, please, are you guys ready? So I'm supposed to call these two different persons? You get it off that there. Always said that's. He just need to block the. What is the change in that?
No, it's.
What? So it looks like round eight, I think. Sixty, either shot. Can't like, can't like to.
No, there, there are.
Right, including those two sixes. All three.
Uh, I didn't have, I wanted to leave the.
All the way up. Now, it's, I mean. It's hard. It's hard. All bar. Make there. So I'm right, right? Yes. Okay, got it. It's good. Sorry, I'm sorry. That, uh, I'm gonna say, yes, you're gonna have to give me that vote.
Oh, with the new magazine? It was the last year. They claim.
I got this one.
They were giving such nonsense. Hey.
Thirty-two gallons. Awful. Awful.
No, um, so there are no names on there because that's a legal implication to, we have actually created, uh, possible. Because if we put a name there, and then the board flat turns it down, that person is automatically denied. So by not putting the names on there, then they come out and they announce the names, now only the names of people who are hired are announced, so nobody is publicly embarrassed. That is the way that other school districts do it. Embarrassed me, I told you, mine's your name, what's your agenda? What? I said, you know. Publicly embarrass me by defining on one of your agents. But, I mean, it's to, it's to avoid possible lawsuits. And, and, uh, they, they talked about this in my training I went to in February, and it took me this long to talk to them. You know, we've been doing it the same way for a long time. But it, the way they're doing it, it's risky, so. So this is a safer way to do it. And this is a way, like, Louisiana, West Data, Twin Falls, all those districts do it this way. Well, I didn't, they started with names, they didn't use it, but I saw my name. Yeah, and I've noticed that, it's a. Yeah, and I noticed that it's about two thousand nineteen. If you start, if you look at agendas, it used to be in the consent agenda, the personnel items. And at one point during that, when it was still in consent agenda, the names were still on there. Yeah. But whether or not we put it in the consent agenda is a board decision and there are some board members who are against that.
Classified have to be approved through three hours. They jam, nobody had ever done that.
Oh. Yeah, I. Yeah, I did that often. But, yeah. It is what it is, but in the future, this is how I'm gonna do it as long as I'm clerk because part of my job, as I understand it, is to protect the school district from. So I need to make sure that it's worded on there in a way that is best, so. It just took me a long time to talk them into it. Well, and what it is, is sometimes you don't know what's gonna cause a problem until somebody files a lawsuit. And then you're like, oh, wow, yeah, okay, we should do that. Because nobody knows. Yeah. Which is exactly what happened with this thing with him apologizing. They just didn't, he just didn't have.
Oh! Yes, but I thought we talked about that. Six-six four I. Did you include any loading grounds in his regular grand sum? Eight-year-old. Weird that.
So, I don't know.
Six-six five, yeah, from here. So, no. So, then that's all listed in under just so. That's only, so that's all. Because that, because a lot of. Back for one or six, so that doesn't. Say, I feel that means. Things in, things in our part of mind are making. So I can see exactly those now. Because right now, I'm not making any appeals. Maybe I can use my imagination. Because I, I'll try to manage this to what I have. I put numbers on there. It's easy for the person that didn't understand.
Tired, did you see this in the air? I just lifted a bucket and pulled that into the water. So I went home and shopped and all.
So, three, you said?
Watching something happen. Mary's been afraid. So. Not afraid, she's. Not much. Yeah, so she's. I said, Mom. I know your mom. Yeah. Yeah, no. You can add a lot of change. So. The baby is. This is. I wish I could. I. And. And. The other. She's. The. Oh, you wish. Do you want to? Um, I don't know. I don't know. She. I don't know. She. Yeah. Those are. I. I know. Well, I. The. Like that. He's not like. He's. Short. That's. Two. He's just. Right. She's. She's. This is. This is. Easy. Kids. I did my. Oh. I can eat these. Yes. This is a job I have to get. First time I heard of your service. Yeah, well, I just got. So. He's a young man. I think that. Ready? I do. I remember making. Not making the. So. I was. She's. And like art and like. All that. She hurts. Yes. Oh. She's. See? Well, I. No. I. I gotta say. Because he has some. Okay. He's a. Has. He has. I think. You have. That. I'm. You. I mean, how. Basically. So. Um, so. I guess that's the first time. So. Oh. Because. Now. It's. It's. The. Being a student. I think it's weird. To. I guess it's. Right. We have. I just. Here. But it seems like. People always think it's not on the. All. It's. No. There's like. I'm. Yeah. Yeah, you know, I was just. And. Just. Purpose down. What would you just? Then. I, I was. She. I did. So fourteen, you said fourteen, fourteen was. But is that. So. I. I. I think. I. Because. Yeah. They have. They have. They have. So they have. So like. They. So they can stay. No, same capital. Same capital. I didn't give you less for here. That's for. Start out some solutions. I. Thanks. Yeah. I was just. I also. I was. Well, usually. Usually what they do. Process. Play that on. This may take the high. Or. Right. As a. Like. It's. Here. What? Do you need to know? Do you know? Oh, yeah. He does. That's. Yes. I.
Okay, we're officially out of executive session. We're moving to item eleven, action items subsequent to executive session. Item eleven A. Approve or deny superintendent's recommendation for hiring of personnel to fill K twelve positions. And announce. Were you going to announce the new position?
Did you have a name?
Did you have a name?
Okay, I recommend.
No, none of the board members, because we're going to make the motion, right?
Exactly.
Got to be a board member. Okay, I'll make the motion.
Yes.
I move that we approve Melissa Smith for a K twelve position at our school.
I'll second.
Sorry. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Excellent. And then, a second motion. I move that we approve Mara Willoughby for a K twelve position at our school.
I second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Excellent.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, Ms. Woolery is here, Ms. Smith is here, if they could stand up so the.
Please.
People in attendance could see them. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seconded that second motion. You made the motion.
The second one.
Kylie.
Kylie. That high school student. I know. I'm sorry. I digress. Um. Okay, uh, moving to eleven C. Approve or deny superintendent's recommendation for hiring of temporary assistant business manager. Who will not announce.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the hiring for our temporary assistant business manager. For Gabe De Gillette.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Excellent.
Gabe is also here.
Gabe is also here. There he is.
Excellent. Okay. Um, moving on to item twelve, new business. Discuss and approve or deny the budget for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year.
That's.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to approve, make a motion to approve the budget for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year.
I second.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Excellent. Under new business, item twelve B, accept the resignation of Vice Chairman Robert Murray. School Board Trustee Zone Five, effective June sixteenth, twenty twenty-two.
You want to read your letter to everybody?
You want me to read it? I'll read, I'll read my letter.
All right.
And it's addressed to everyone. It is with heartfelt sadness that I must tender my resignation as District Five Board Trustee and Vice Chairman of the Garden Valley School Board. My wife and I are moving, are moving and will no longer reside in Garden Valley, effective June sixteenth. I am forever grateful to have served together with you, all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the resignation of Vice. Well, you're chairman now. Chairman Robert Murray from the School Board Trustee who's own five.
I second that motion.
Any further discussion? Okay.
Yeah, Mr.
Yeah, go ahead.
Rob, I'd like to thank you for stepping in. Under dire circumstances. You were, you were very new on the board, you stepped in as to chair the meeting. Uh, you struggled through it. I want to thank you for, for doing that.
For struggling?
For stepping in and doing it. And learning on the job as you went along, thank you.
I concur with that as well. It was very trying times, but with your leadership, we got through those, these next two months and got some things done, so I appreciate it as well.
And I certainly hope that I'm leaving things better than when I received them.
You certainly did.
And I think we have a second, so you just have to ask.
Will you approve of it?
Well, do I?
Yes, you do.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Excellent, thank you very much. Okay, um.
I think technically Rob has to.
I have to abstain, I apologize. I've got no choice actually in this morning. Under new business.
No. Oh, did?
Is it?
Yes.
Under new business, item twelve C, declare open school board member position for trustee Zone Five and set the dates for letters of interest.
What's the date?
How far out would you like to make it?
It's a day before, the two days before, we have to do it for thirty days, so that's the max, right?
We don't have to evidently, I, I was under that assumption as well, but the way it's worded, it just has to be.
There's no requirement.
Reasonable amount of time.
When is our next?
So our next meeting would be July twelfth.
Unless you want to.
Call a meeting in two weeks.
Unless you want to call a special meeting between now.
Uh, we, we have to give enough people, they have to get noticed, they have to apply, they have to. It, it's a process, they have to think about it. So you want to make it ten days before, uh, two days before the July meeting, is that?
Or if we stick to business days, you could leave it, you could make it July eighth, which would be the Friday before the Tuesday.
Right. That would, that's what I.
Okay.
Okay, so you want to make it Friday?
That's what I recommend.
Friday, the eighth at twelve noon? I usually put a time on there as well.
Yeah, do noon.
Noon, okay.
Well.
Friday, July eighth at noon.
Okay, do you want me to make a motion on that? Do we need a motion on that?
A motion. Uh, Chairman, I'd like to declare that we post the position for open school board member trustee zone five for Friday, July eighth at twelve o'clock.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Excellent. Under new business, item twelve D, discuss and approve or deny an alternate K through five curriculum for the Lomond School. Stephanie Wil, Stephanie Williamson.
She here?
You don't, you can send your stuff right here.
Did y'all get my letter? Do I need to read it?
You have a copy of the letter in your board papers.
Yeah.
Was that?
I read my letter.
You read my letter?
Yeah.
I read your letter. Okay, so.
It's right there.
I guess my presentation is pretty much what my letter says. With Lomond, um, and I know a couple of you are new, so if you don't know, Lomond is our school in Lomond that is a one-room schoolhouse. And we teach grades K through five there. And I just finished my fourth year as teacher. And, um, so you can learn from teaching multiple grade breaks in one classroom, it is a little different than what you receive here. It's a little bit like homeschooling a whole bunch of kids. Um, I've had anywhere from seven to ten in the classroom in the past year. Um, so as we were looking at curriculum this year, I guess I was thinking of it differently because I was going to leave Lomond and be up here. But now I'm going to be back at Lomond next year, so I was trying to think of a curriculum that I could use in that kind of setting because most curriculums are set to be fifty to an hour and a half per grade level, like say for English Language Arts. And that's just not doable. So I tried these wonders, it's just got so many parts and pieces, not my personal, though, what we have, I was a junior's journey. Had so many parts and pieces, and I had so many grades, and I couldn't teach it all, I kind of pieced part of things together and did it that way, so. Um, while we were looking at curriculum, um, we also looked at this curriculum called CKLA. And it's a little more, it has a lot more books, it's a little more, um, I'll just pass these out. Sure, but this is the third grade readers for the whole of third grade, for most students, so you can kind of. Kind of see, they kind of, for a, a longer period.
Is this, is this a set?
This is a set of all the units for our third. And, so you see they're a little compact size, you don't have five hundred little tiny readers, which I already have, boxes and boxes and boxes of tiny readers. So I was just trying to be not overwhelmed. I spent a lot of years being overwhelmed. Then try to get it. My goal for next year, and I started this at the end of this year, is I'm not going to kill myself anymore. And I'm not going to take home and work too much at home, so it's a lot of time. So I, I might question, and I'm sorry I'm a bit emotional, but it can get hard.
Okay, I got a lot of questions, but.
Yes, I have, yes.
So. When I first understood this, you were going to be leaving the Lomond School area, and you were going to have a different teacher altogether in there.
Right.
And then, I understood at that time that you were recommending the other program.
I did not recommend the other.
Okay, so the, the group you were in.
I was in the group.
Okay. And then I, I heard that you were going to be there for half a year, but now you're going to be there for the full year?
Um, probably ninety-five percent likely, but I'll be there for a full year.
Full school year?
Yeah.
Okay. So. Did we get a cost impact on this?
Yeah. It's about, did you have it in your letter?
Oh, yeah, it's in the, in your package, it's on the second.
About twenty, twenty-seven hundred dollars, yes.
That's for two grades.
Okay.
So with this curriculum, we're, um, they sell it in a way that is very usable for us, that is, you buy a teacher plus student package, or one teacher, one student. And then you can just get more student materials. So you don't have to buy a big package of thirty, for thirty kids, like.
So these particular students in Lomond will not be learning the same curriculum that the students in Garden Valley will be learning, correct?
They would be learning the same skills.
But not the same.
But not reading the same.
That's a very good question, I was going to mention, you know, as a superintendent, one of my concerns is using a different curriculum than Lomond and here. However, it's the same standards that they teach, it's just a different method of teaching. So they would still have to hit the same standards to promote to the next grade, so. And she's in a unique situation, being in a one-room schoolhouse, isolated, and, and I'm going to trust her judgment as, me having been the teacher up there, that this is better for them, okay?
Right, and to me, it's kind of about commitment, right? So if we're going to have a teacher who's committing to changing the curriculum for that area, I, I still want to go, have half a year go by and then go, guess what, we got to get another teacher breath there, right?
We, we can absorb them into the curriculum that we bought for this year.
Okay.
Really easily. It, it's, you know, we're talking just a few students, that she felt like this would be better for them. You know, I don't know, because I don't teach there, so it's, it's hard to make that judgment call, but.
Well, I think it's easier, it's easier for them to teach because the teacher's addition is very linear, it's kind of, you know, I got, you know. Uh, the weather's curriculum is, is kind of, you're trying to throw everything in, or, uh, you know, kids that speak Spanish, and kids that are behind, and kids that are ahead. And this does that too, but it's, it's a little more integrated into my drawing, I think.
Okay.
In a sense. I did teach a little bit with this last year because it was available free online in the first edition. I did a unit with my fourth grader, um, and it was integrating history into, um, medieval times. And so I was, we were reading a lot of it.
This curriculum is approved by the state as well, so it's on the state approved list.
It is.
Again.
And it's, you know, it's. It's teaching the same things, different stories.
Right, that's what, that's about what I was about to say, it's just, it's just a different way to get at the same standards. It's not cost prohibitive from that standpoint, it's really, you know, we could go either way.
Alright, thank you, that was my questions.
I have a question. Can you just provide a couple bullet points about wonders that won't work? For your scenario, just like I get your scenario, but I don't fully get your scenario, so just so I can have a better understanding.
Well, Stephanie, I remember just going through the, the list of what's considered to see if they said anything yet for us.
Yeah.
Didn't look like.
I'm sorry, what'd you just say?
The, the stuff that's out in the hallway, to see if they're.
All the.
If it already.
But that's a moot point.
I know, but, but we saw, looking through the lists, is each grade has a million pieces. And that is so hard for me.
Okay.
You know, especially if I, you know, one year I was teaching five, you know, the readers at this day, it was a hundred of them for each grade. And it's just a little.
Overwhelming.
Right, I get that.
Um, any other questions?
Not for me.
Do you feel like, just because I have a third grader, so, do you feel like, um, the curriculum will be captivating enough for them?
That?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's kind of an extended study into things.
Okay.
And that's one of the reasons that I am really drawn to it, and that's like I did with the fourth grader of the medieval times. You know, we're doing our grammar and, you know, everything has, is having to do with this, and it's learning about i's, serves, and, you know, feudal system, all of this. So that was like a bonus to have this system of learning, you know, over this one part of history. Every different time, and, you know, it's kind of like we're teaching history and English.
Right. Yeah.
Which for, for our situation, killing two birds like that is like.
Thank you.
Because our day is only going to make a seventh hour.
This is called the CKLA curriculum.
I had to chuckle that you have underlined the mental health of the teacher.
Well, and, and the email to Randy, I think that was not really for drama, it was, it's, it's true.
It's true, alright, I can believe it.
So Mister Chairman, I move that we approve an alternate K through five curriculum for the Lomond School. CKLA.
Yeah, you need to.
That's the name of the curriculum.
Curriculum you're perfect.
What is it? CKLA.
LA.
CKLA.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Excellent.
Thank you, Miss Williamson.
Yes, thank you. This looks interesting.
Yeah, I'd love to read this one.
Since I'm Native American, this one caught my.
See what I got.
Interest.
God's strength.
Yeah.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item thirteen, old business. Discuss and possibly approve amendments to policy thirty-three oh five, the third and final reading.
Um, I think this has come up before. On page three. Number two. Subsequent offenses, and just the way it is written, B. Additional violations of this policy will result in additional in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension. I suggest that we take, that we strike out N. And we just have all expulsion at the discretion of the school board, however, we need to insert after ISS and OSS administration, school administration. Because that's what they manage, that's what falls under school admin, but expulsion falls under school board. And the same for number three, A.
Did I send the wrong line?
Yes.
I made those changes, and I don't, I don't, I made the changes, I don't know if, if this is the wrong document.
I must have, I must have sent, I must have made a copy of it.
Yeah, because I put it, I put it in a different.
We didn't want to finger anybody in the meeting in public.
Now, we'll have to push it to the next meeting so you have the right document to look at.
Can we do it again at the next meeting?
Uh, somebody, okay, so somebody will need to make the motion to table it, because there does need to be a motion to table it.
I move that we table our discussion and possible improvement of amendments to policy three-three zero five.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Excellent. Under old business, item thirteen B, discuss Title Nine Policies thirty, thirty-eighty-five, thirty-eighty-five P, thirty-eighty-five F one, and thirty-eighty-five F two, and possible approved adaptation of these policies. First reading.
Yeah, I'm still not, I'm still not good with approving this, because this is still pending in our state legislature. It's actually, our state legislators, late legislatures are making decisions about this already, so I don't see the need for us to adopt this at this time. In any form at all.
You mean wait to see what settles out in the legislature?
Yeah, I don't, I mean.
But for, for me, I'd also like a full board that is experienced, because it's very, it could have been very simple for three board members to have made a decision on this. But I'd like to have a full, a stronger board to have this kind of discussion, where the board members are, are somewhat experienced, have read through it, have managed to do some research, and then have an informed discussion. That being said, if we postpone this, we still have to follow Idaho law, we still have to follow federal law.
Correct.
Which means that we're not going to be discriminating, we're not going to be doing anything like that, it's just that this policy is extremely controversial, and it is being challenged in court. And Idaho legislature is having to look at it, so maybe we should postpone it until decisions are made.
I'll just point out to the board that if we do not adopt it, we cannot join the consortium that I talked about in the last two meetings, so just understand that, it's your decision, but that's, just need to understand that.
When does it have to be adopted by to be part of?
You can join the consortium.
Whenever, and.
And I know we're, we, we don't want to end up with a big controversy in here and then not be part of this consortium, I would say.
You're saying not being part of the consortium would generate controversy?
No, because it drops all this on us, right? If we're part of this.
And it's just, I think it's, doesn't it come down to resources available?
Right. I don't know, I, I still think we keep it open for discussion, and now that we have two other board members here with more experience, it's not dead or anything, but.
Just postpone?
Postpone it.
So if you make a motion to postpone, you'll need to set a date.
Set a date. I, I think we should discuss it at every meeting, honestly.
So you can table it to the next meeting, or you can postpone it for a specific date?
I think we table it to the next meeting and.
The next regular meeting, or the next?
Regular.
Next regular meeting?
So you can, you guys can then, can do research and decide whether we make a decision, table or postpone.
You guys can get that.
It's just, as a whole, like, if you have a stronger board. And I mean, I was, because now Rob's not going to be here, and there's going to be a new, I, I would like five, I mean, five board members is a strong board.
Okay, so you need a motion to table?
Yeah.
Uh, do we think we can get to a decision at the next meeting, or is that?
I don't think so.
No, that's, right next to him.
So why don't we postpone it until your position is filled?
Built.
And, and that person has a little bit of experience, then we can open the discussion.
So maybe postpone it until September's meeting?
Well, I, I don't see any reason why we can't just table it to the next meeting, because what if his position doesn't get filled? I mean, it's not like we, we have to vote on it then.
That's why we say September.
No, you can table it again, but if you postpone, you do need to come up with a date, that's the difference between tabling and postponing.
I, I agree, just table it.
Let's just table it then.
Okay. Table to the next.
Table it next session, then we can do that.
Okay.
Alright.
So, you want me, so I move that we table this discussion on Title Nine Policies, three oh eight-five, three oh eight-five P, three oh eight-five F one, and three oh eight-five F two, and plus, till the next regular meeting.
I will second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, under old business, item thirteen C, public comment and input on the back-to-school plan posted on our website in August. Any public comment? So everyone's happy with the back-to-school plan?
Okay.
They're on vacation.
Does this mean that, that will be posted in on it?
No, it has been posted.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
And it's just public comment. Now, it's been certain
Okay. Throw off my I'm gonna be losing weight. Item 13D, public comment on the input, and input on the use of funds plan for the ARPESR fund. Is there any public comment? Guess there's no public comment. Okay, so, item 14, meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. Oh, excuse me, next reg, thank you, next regular school board meeting is on July the 12th, 2022, at 6:00 PM here at the Garden Valley School. Thank you.